Section of the meeting, I'll open up that. Right now, I've got a card from Mr. Chauncey Brown. Is Mr. Brown here? He left. Mr. Matthew Oakley? We've got three minutes, a three-minute time. Greetings, Mayor, council members, fellow citizens. I'd like for you to please listen closely to a little thing I have here.
When people write stuff to me, I don't care how mad they are, how serious they are, I'm gonna address it. If I find one of my guys retaliating on somebody in this community, he's history. He's out of the door. I don't play that. That's wrong.
That was Chief Roll. I don't play that. It's wrong. By your inaction and that of Chief Roll's, you have allowed, if not ordered, the continued retaliation of events against Dr. McDonough and now his wife, both in the locker room and the office, and now on the internet for the whole world to see. Shame on you. Furthermore, let's have another listen.
We also recognize that this amazing country that we live in allows the citizenry to come up and say whatever they want, for the most part. And God bless America for that, because that's what we love most about this country. The fact of the matter is, we glorify democracy by hearing this and sitting here and being patient and letting our fellow citizens say what they want to say. And the reason why this chambers is so beautiful is because, in this chambers, we celebrate democracy. We glorify the system that we have here, the idea that elected officials, the people's representatives, sit on this dais and hear from the people that brought them here and put them here, and that they represent, the idea that people can come here and say what they want.
The people can come here and say what they want. By your actions, among which trespassing Dr. McDonough and Mr. Hill, and any others you may do in the future, you have perpetrated what is considered prior restraint, which is the most serious and least tolerable of all intrusions upon the First Amendment, as found by our Supreme Court in Nebraska Press Association versus Stewart ruling. And by doing so, you've both contradicted your own words and you failed to respectably uphold your oath of office. Shame on us for letting you get away with that. On another note, I travel by the City Hall about four times a day, every single day, and I can count on one hand the times I have seen even one police cruiser parked in the parking lot out there. And that's in the past 28 days. But every council meeting, there usually is, now tonight's an exception, but there usually is so many police vehicles out there in the lot that citizens have no place to park. They're parking in the restaurant over there or in the other parking lot across the street. So in my not-so-humble opinion, ladies and gentlemen, change is coming, and maybe sooner than you think. So don't any of you guys get too comfortable in those chairs up there. And I might add as a reminder... Thank you, sir. Thank you. Ms. Rosemary Brichette? She left. Mr. Trilio?
Roger Trilio. Roger? Julio.
Julio?
You better.
Vanessa McDonough?
My name is Vanessa McDonough, and I come here tonight with a deeply disturbing issue. I feel violated by actions of some of your officers. I now fear for my life and safety, as well as that of my family. While retaliating against my husband for his disputes with the city, Homestead officers have targeted me by publishing my name, address, occupation, and place of work online. Then they crossed all lines of decency and violated Florida law by sexually harassing me online, to the point of cyber stalking and committing criminal defamation against me. The screenshots that I just provided to each of you are from the website leoaffairs.com. There are repeated instances of untrue, disturbing, and downright vulgar statements being made about me. I had initially intended to come here and read some of these statements aloud to you, just for the effect to see how vulgar they are. But verbalizing these statements could be misinterpreted as being disorderly, and I do not wish to be the next person trespassed or arrested for attending these meetings. So I hope instead you can take a few minutes to read through what I have provided to you. Keep in mind that these packets show only a fraction of the 130-plus comments made about me and my family on that website. And again, I warn you, they are graphic and vulgar, and of course, 100% untrue. As you review these screenshots, I hope that you, like me, are shocked that officers that have sworn to serve and protect this community are attacking an innocent person in this manner. Mayor Porter, please consider how you would feel if these awful things were said about your wife. And Chief Roll, would you tolerate these challenges to your wife's chastity? So my purpose for coming here tonight is to make you aware of the situation, if you are not already aware of these atrocious statements online. And I'm requesting the following. First, I would like a proper investigation to determine who in your department made these comments. Secondly, I need a guarantee that those involved will be properly disciplined so that similar attacks will not occur in the future. And lastly, I'm going to file an official complaint and criminal charges against those individuals responsible. I'll be providing the full packet of my complaint and evidence tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is it Frank Shawback?
Kevin Sullivan, 1860 Southeast Sixth Court. I came here tonight to speak about an issue that I emailed each and every one of you. It concerned a utility outage, actually a utility malfunction, where it damaged my friend's house, damaged appliances. And while I have no issue with the way the utility company, or our company, came and handled it for my friends, they were forthright, they even found them housing for that very, very hot night in a hotel. What I do have an issue with is how the actual payout came. I understand once it's happened, you turn it over to risk management, and from there it goes to the insurance carrier. But what I outlined to each and every one of you was, how do you tell somebody in their house, they have a microwave that's a few years old, it's no longer any use? It was working before the city blew it up. How do you tell them that something else isn't any good? I did have a conversation, the city manager had the assistant city manager at the time contact me, and we had a discussion. And he said, "Well, you know, it's like if you had an old car, they wouldn't give you a new car." Well, I happen to think that if I had a six-year-old car sitting in the street and the utility truck hit it and knocked my headlights off, I think the city would have to put my headlights in because I couldn't operate the vehicle. We had people in a house with a family that had no extra disposable income, and the city could not step up and provide them with a grant of some sort. There's plenty of money available, you just took $4 million out of the utility fund. So I do not like the way it was handled by the administration. That's all I can say. You have an insurance carrier, you could contact the insurance carrier and tell them. But at some point, we, the citizens, should have stepped up and helped this family out. Okay. Number two, I have no problem with the Homestead Police Department. I've been here for a long time, I admire the way they conduct business. But one thing I think you people are shortcoming in is I've heard many calls for body cameras. Now, I understand there's a cost involved with that, but couldn't we have research done where we could buy a limited amount, find funds? There's plenty of grant funds out there, we could get some of these cameras. Now, in my travels this summer, I talked to people up in South or North Carolina, and they were saying the big cost is the storage of the images. But they found some company or somebody where they store it up in a cloud. I don't know what that cloud does. But they store it up there, and it's of no real cost to the cities. So I'm asking you, look into that and bring that back to the citizens.
Thank you, sir.
We all know you're tired of seeing my face tonight. For the first thing that I have to say is, I have some friends of mine that work for the public utilities here in the city of Homestead. I don't know if it's been brought to your attention yet, but over the last two weeks, two people have been injured working for our city, public utilities. And one man was injured, and while he was not qualified to work on a light change near the VFW. And so therefore, I want to ask if the, to Manager Grettis and whomever is in charge over such things, is our safety protocols following National OSHA standards? And where our workers are not being trained properly for the fact that this man was not qualified to use a bucket truck, or use a, didn't have the proper safety equipment, or the proper certifications to even be handling these kinds of things? And I also wanted to ask, why isn't the supervisor was not given purview over this individual in supervising such work? And if they're, if they have the proper equipment under NFPE 70E, under those rules? So that's all I have to ask.
All right, sir. Thank you. We'll get an answer. Mr. Perry, Mark Perry? Is that Perry?
Good evening, everybody. Mark Perry, 32325 Southwest 188th Court, Homestead, Florida. It's a little quieter here tonight, Dr. McDonough, well, one of the Dr. McDonoughs isn't here. I hate that I'm standing up here. This city council, the city does a lot of good stuff, the police department does a lot of good stuff. I'm sure there's a lot of great officers in this department. You've silenced Eric, at least in this forum for now. Unfortunately, what's been created by the lack of attention to this issue and the vindictive manner in which it's been handled by at least the police department, if not other employees of the city, you've created a whole lot of other of us, a whole lot more of us. We're paying attention, we're not speaking usually, we're not here, most of them are home with their families right now. We're watching this, we're watching how it's being done. And we're losing trust, we're losing trust in our police department, we're losing trust in the city council. I'm gonna leave that at that for now. The more important part is what Vanessa already talked about. I can't imagine, Vanessa's too decent of a person to read what she handed out. I can't imagine anyone sitting here, male, female, would be okay with that. If it's officers, let's just say it's not, but evidence points to the fact that it's officers, it's in the Homestead. They have a lot of details. I can't imagine, Mayor, I've seen you out with, and you know, it would be great if you'd look up once in a while, it's really pretty disrespectful to your citizens. I can't imagine you'd be, I've seen you out with your wife, your lovely wife, I can't imagine you tolerating somebody saying that. Can't imagine what would happen if I walked up to Chief Roll when he was out with his family and said that kind of thing. If it was your daughters, if it was your wives, your mothers, whatever. The attitude that's been posted on there, again, may or may not be a police officer, that it's fair game, because Eric's gone after one of their jobs, so family and children are fair game. If I go out and shoot an officer, does that mean I should expect that they go to my house, kick in the door, shoot my children, kill my dog, kill my wife? It's a horrible attitude, it's not what we expect from public servants, it's not, we hold officers to a higher standard. I get it when somebody gets mad, they do stupid things. We don't expect that from officers. The things written in here, the things they're writing, if they're really from police officers, I expect you guys to follow up, expect you to root it out and deal with it, whether it's in public or behind the scenes. I got 41 seconds left, I better start reading. I'll skip the part I already addressed. So I'll start, "Because of McGuido's seizure, for McGuido sticking his blank deep into the lovely Vanessa and giving her a good blanking, he will probably claim excessive force. However, Vanessa gave consent, which she never withdrew. Therefore, no civil rights violations." I'm gonna run out of time. I hope you guys read it, I'm not gonna have time to read it. It's only a few of the comments of 130. Take the time, read it, Mayor, read it. It really doesn't belong in this forum anyway, I checked to make sure there weren't kids.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Just your address for the record, please.
My name is Elizabeth Miller, I live at 3424 Northeast First Street, Homestead. My husband is Steve Miller, a pastor at Core Community Church. He was glad to come at your request two months ago to serve you by praying over you. We pray for you often, and we care deeply for Homestead. It's why we moved here five years ago. I was a bright-eyed, optimistic, white woman with nothing but trust and goodwill towards those who carry a badge and those who govern us. Today, I stand before you with a guarded heart because I have learned over the years that this power that was granted to you to serve Homestead has been violated. There is no excuse for that. Any violation of rights by those who carry badges cannot be simply canceled out by other good deeds. There must be accountability and taken responsibility for such misdeeds. Isn't this how we truly become men and women of character? Respect cannot be demanded, but it does come easily when it is earned. Do nothing to impede our trust. Your good deeds, which you have done, do not make up for your unlawful deeds. I have been witness to many of my friends being treated unfairly and with prejudice simply for looking a certain way or for championing a particular cause. A couple years ago, I was entrenched in trying to help eight Haitian children on a street who were being greatly neglected and abused. I called the police countless times, and I was grateful for their response, but discouraged by their words when they said, "This is how these kinds of people live. They will take advantage of you, you're putting your family in danger. Oh, you're the one who likes black people. I'll help you because you seem like a nice woman, but you are wasting your time. How any child is considered a waste of time and incriminated for the sins of their caregiver is despicable." And on that same note, I want to thank Vice Mayor, who is not here, for quickly responding to my post regarding the children crossing Campbell Drive without a proper crosswalk and a sidewalk connecting to the neighborhood to the charter school at Waterstone, along with the lack of a school's own speed limit. It's incredible. I want this city to do well. I want to cheer you on. So please fight for what is good. Rather than leaving a legacy of lavish buildings, let's leave a legacy of transparency, of trust, of justice, of selfless agendas, selfless agendas, that would protect the children, the poor, and the disenfranchised that crowd our city. This city has funds to put cameras on these officers that cannot afford not to.
Thank you, ma'am. Is it David Delka? Barbara? She left? Chris Lewison? I'm sorry if I butchered that, apologize.
Yes, good evening. My name is Chris Lewison, 2728 Northeast Third Court. I'm here in support of the McDonough family. These are decent people, and I go to church with them, and it really hurts me to see them suffer through what is being characterized as injustice and what I've seen. I just would like, you know, everyone in this council to, to really listen to them. As a community, we, those elected officials, the police department, and the citizens, we have to work together to make Homestead a wonderful place for our families and our children and for future generations. You know, now's the time, I mean, we have an opportunity here to turn things around. Let's take the train in a different direction and do the right thing. And I, you know, I've been here 15 years in Homestead, and I've seen a lot of things, a lot of growth, a lot of people, a lot of influx of people. And that has changed Homestead somewhat. But it, you know, I loved it when it was more of a small-town feeling, some folks remember it from way back before that, but you know, it's, but we, you know, with a small town comes a sense of family, a sense of belonging, a sense of, you know, community. And we work together, we live together, a lot of us work, you know, live right here in Homestead, a lot of people don't, you know, get in the car and head north on the turnpike. So, you know, we have to make this place wonderful for our families, I'm repeating myself, but you know, that's really important, that's really, it's really important, and let's be nice and fair to each other, treat each other with respect, and just work together to make this a better place. And I, you know, I do appreciate what the police department has done for us, you know, I have friends and family, friends, family of friends who are on the police department. And, you know, we just need to, we need to not be on opposite sides of issues, we need to be working together to solve the problems and not allow things to get out of control. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. How you doing, sir?
Good evening, everyone, Mayor, Council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Your address.
Homestead Air Force Base has been around since 1942, and we've seen a lot of growth, and we've seen it close, and we've seen a lot of changes recently over the past 11 years since I've been a resident of Waterstone. My address is exempt, by the way, I'm sorry. There's approximately 3,000 homes on that west side of that runway, and there's constant planes taking off countless hours of the, you know, different hours of the night. What steps can be done to reach out to the Air Force and see what can be done to implement a sound denting wall? Planes are more active, there's ammunition's testing going on more frequently where houses are shaking, it feels like a bomb's going off. So I don't know if that's something that you guys could reach out to them to see if we could, you know, start working towards the future, maybe erecting one of those walls. I just want to give a praise, I know that it kind of doesn't happen too often, but my, I guess, garbage, garbage man that's been faithfully taking care of us does a phenomenal job, his name is Roberto Valdez, so if you could reach back out to him and just say, you know, thank you for the job that he's providing the citizens of the area that he's serving, at least in Waterstone. Always has his truck maintained, always has a smile on his face, doesn't take things personal. Want to invite you all to Waterstone, we're having on November 12th a tree lighting ceremony. It's gonna be 2:00 to 9:00, just for the council, if you guys are interested and you have no other plans and want to support our community. On another note, just going back on some of the things you talked about this evening, there's a lot of continuous building going on on the east side of Homestead. Things aren't in place necessarily to stop certain entities from popping up, retirement complexes, dialysis centers, urgent cares, a lot more residences, and it really, as far as what we're doing with the showbiz community, that's phenomenal, that's gonna be an awesome addition to Homestead. We just are gonna be starting to turn into Wes Kendall, and lack of parks popping up is gonna be something that's gonna be on the, down the road that's not addressed now, you're gonna have to take care of it later, and then if there's no areas to purchase to build, we're not gonna have that availability for families that are moving down into the Homestead area. Also, too, the sports complex, I know after it turns out from the police that, you know, you guys are looking at possibly seeing what can be done for that area. Harris Field is an area that is surrounded by an industrial area, creating something like Harris Park over in the sports complex, kind of like a tropical park, I think would be a great addition to the east side of Homestead, allowing to take away some of that extra traffic from that area and creating like a downtown Dade Land atmosphere where you have what you're looking for in the downtown Homestead area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Hall? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Hey, how you guys doing? Grew up in Homestead with the Campbell Drive Elementary, Campbell Drive Junior High, Homestead Senior High. I really like where Homestead's going by growing, especially to the city manager, and what you're doing is phenomenal. With that said, I'm not privy to everything that the cops do, bad, good. We might have a couple bad ones out of the bunch, you may or may not, but instead of getting body cameras, because we are growing, I think that money should be put into getting more cops to come in with the growth that we have, so we can have people to move down and be safe. Because when I was doing the research, right below us in Florida City, it was, what, one of the worst cities to live in, in Miami? So why don't we get more cops so people could come in and move in, get more money growing, get more people coming, coming in? And my question for you on the city manager, the retail space on the outside of the garage, is that gonna be leased by the city? By the development? For how many years?
This is just the comment section, because we'll get into that, the details of me...
Yeah, but my thing is, I'm not privy to how the cops treat others, but if we're growing, we need to grow our force a little bit more instead of the body cameras. Body cameras could come later, but right now I think we should, because we're going in a positive direction, I think that's what we need.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Tru, Roger? One? Tru? Yeah. Pardon me.
Good evening. 72 Northwest 20th Street. Mayor, Council, I'd like to know if the ordinance that passed 2015-06-05, the regulations for schools, was it taken into consideration that adult education is also considered school and is affected by this ordinance? I can't lease anything out to technical schools or anything else.
If you give me a copy of the ordinance, I'll speak with the Development Services Director, and we can look at it and...
I'll get it.
And then also, if you could give us your contact information, maybe I should give this to you, Joe, so that you could...
I've got, I've got the contact information, we'll get somebody to get back to you.
We'll get somebody to check it for you.
Okay, well, I don't mean it for me, I think it's for everybody in the city. They'd like to come do business. And me that makes money off of that, but we're good.
All right, sir, we'll get it, we'll get it figured out.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that's all the cards I have, so at this time I'm gonna close the public comments section. Mr. Attorney, one of the things that, you know, we're trying to establish, you know, clear policy, and I know our ordinance had said that, you know, it had to be, we'll just read the portion where you have to sign in prior to...
Right. The section of our council rules says that individuals wishing to speak on matters not included in the public hearing section of the agenda, but pertinent to the city, may do so by signing in with the city clerk 30 minutes prior to the meeting by providing their name, address, and the topic they would like to speak on. I guess the purpose of the mayor calling on me is just to remind everybody to, we've been a little bit flexible as we've been implementing this rule in terms of the 30-minute period, but if people would just try to get signed, get their name signed in 30 minutes prior to that, way the mayor has the opportunity to organize the cards and see how much time it's gonna take and so forth, but just a friendly reminder to people to get signed in 30 minutes prior to the meeting.
And again, tonight, because we're trying to apply our new protocols to this new building, you know, we took a lot of public comment cards that were taken in after what our ordinance requires. So as we move forward, again, if you want to come under, just under public comments where you don't want to talk about something that's specific to the agenda, we need that about 30 minutes prior to the meeting, and that way we can get organized. about 30 minutes prior to the meeting, and that way we can get organized as a manager said, but that's part of our ordinance, and that's what we're going to have to apply in the very near future. So when you, when you go to the door, the clerk is there, if you come at quarters, you know, if you come in, you know, five minutes before the meeting, she's not going to be able to accept that, that comment card. So just for everybody's information as we move forward, as we move forward. Next item is the reports from the city manager, Mr. Manager? Anything? Mr. Attorney, anything from you?
The city manager may have nothing to report, but we've been busy. Actually, I just want to request an executive session on behalf of Eric Stedden, Laura Snyder versus City of Homestead, which is a workman's comp case.
All right, sir. Anything else?
No, sir.
Reports from Mayor and Council, Mr. Roth?
Yes.
Hold on. Go ahead, sir.
Can I just add one thing to the signing in? They don't have to necessarily do it the day of the meeting if they have, if they have issues getting here at that time and then waiting. They can come Monday or Tuesday or the week before to sign up ahead of time, because I know a lot of these people come from work, and now that we've put it to the back end of the meeting, that it'd give them time the day before or Monday to sign that card. With that said, I'm going to move on to the only thing I'm going to bring up tonight, which is the Homestead Rock and Rip Fest, which is coming up October